I do have answers from Dustin Thompson as he had a prior commitment and sent me his answers. The rest of the candidates were invited to do the same. So just for the record out there on that one, but you will mainly be hearing from these lovely people here with me today. Jordan, are we ready on the livestream? Perfect. Alright, so with that, I will go ahead and pass the microphone. And if you each can introduce yourself and why you're running for school board, we'll start there.
My name's Randy Barnhart. I'm lifelong resident of Pocahontas, graduated from high school here in seventy-three. And I just wanted to get involved in the school system.
Hello, my name is Nick Lenz. And the reason I'm running is just basically for our students so that they can become educated, responsible citizens to help our community grow. And I was appointed to this position five years ago. And I ran for one year and then I came up for election. And four years ago, I ran unopposed. And I feel that this is a important position that needs to be filled for our community.
Hello, my name's Mike Crossgrove. I was appointed for a year, then I ran in general election for two more years. So this would be my technically second term. I believe that the most important thing that the school board has to do, and the reason I have been saying that and I ran was it is, our job is to protect the kids and that the kids get an education first.
Hello, I'm Shree Johnson. And my husband and I have lived in Pocahontas for eighteen years and we plan to stay here. And I think one of the first things I want to say is I feel we have a great school already. And the reason I'm running is sometimes in life you just have a sense way down deep inside you that you're supposed to do something and that's what this is. I believe I'm supposed to run and this is just one of those times for me that I'm supposed to follow through on that. And so I think it's important that we teach our kids the truth and we strive to have them do their best. And we just need a good, safe place for them to learn. And I have, my husband and I have six kids. And so we just want to see the school system do great.
And then Dustin did answer this question. And he decided to run for office because he feels that we need to make some changes that bring our communities closer together and not further apart. So that is Dustin's answer to this question. So the next question that we will go ahead and jump into is what experiences and qualifications do you have that you feel will be helpful and relevant to serving on the school board? So Shree, you want to start?
Okay, well, one of the things is like I've already said, you know, we have six kids. And so any of us that have kids, we have a stake in this community. We have a stake in our schools and it's important that we have fabulous schools. When I was at the city council forum before this, that was one thing they mentioned over and over again is that our schools are very important. And you know, all of us here already know that. We, one thing I feel is my education could possibly help on the school board. I have, I majored in accounting and finance and real estate insurance. And I have my CPA license. And I think those types of things can help on the school board.
I believe that the most important thing that I can bring to the school board is, I was a mechanic for twenty-five years. I still mentioned for the county and stuff. And that between the busing and seeing roads and the rest of this stuff all the time, that I still think that the most important thing about some of this is trying to reduce some of the busing on some of that issue as far as that goes. And I hope that my experience with the county and stuff will help that issue come along.
What makes me qualified, I believe, is that I've already been in this position for five years. I've lived and worked in the county my whole life. And I've gone through some of the changes that our school has done. I did K through five in Palmer. And in sixth through eighth grade, the Pomeroy students had come and combined with us. And I had finished my four years of high school in Pomeroy. So I know what it's like when different schools come together to, into different buildings. And I see how that affects the students and the community. And we'd just like to work out any differences so that we can be as strong as we can be.
I think the experience I bring to this would be, I worked in the school system as an associate for seven years. We've got great kids. Anybody says anything different than that, I can't believe it. But great kids, we've got a great staff at school. And I think I bring compassion. I worked in school for seven years and I think I earned a lot of respect from a lot of students. And all I can say is, I love PAC.
Alright, so Dustin answered this question as well. And mentioned that he feels qualified because he's a leader in his community and he enjoys talking to people and listening to their concerns. So then the next question we have for the candidates is, what is your vision for the future of our school district? Randy, you can start.
Well, I think we can grow a lot more than what we have. You know, we just had a bond issue and stuff that didn't go through. But I think, I think we need a lot of stuff. That we gotta have better communication with the different people in the towns around, for sure. But I think we've got a great base with the teachers and the students and stuff there. And I can see Pocahontas growing.
Well, my vision for the future is just to continue to be financially responsible to the taxpayers. And for our students is to put forth the best curriculum, staff, and facilities so that they can have a good education.
Yeah, I have to agree with Nick on that, that the facilities part of it is a very important thing. And getting back to the previous forum where they were talking about expanding, trying to get people to move back and we get kids in the community, that adds to the, to the people that will come to pack, students and everything else, that it will help everything as far as that goes. That's all I can say on that one.
I, I agree. We need a safe, comfortable place to learn. It doesn't have to be the biggest and the best, but there are certain needs that must be met. And that's what these guys are talking about too. We need great teachers, we need great administrators. We need a place where parents can be heard. An excellent curriculum, that's what I believe.
Alright, so we will now move into public questions that people have emailed in and have also written when they entered the door here. So we will just jump right into one of these random ones. The bond issue has kind of already been brought up and that's one of the questions we have on here. So we'll jump into that. So what is your stance on the bond issue that was just happening in September? And what are your plans to mend fences between Pomeroy and the rest of the school district? Whoever wants to start, feel free, you don't have to go in that order, but...
We tried to get this bond issue passed by lumping everything together. It was never the school board's intention to get this done without Pomeroy's approval or anything else, because they get to vote just like everybody else does. And it was never our intention to ever withhold any information from them and/or the public here. Now, that's just the way it was. I mean, it gets printed in the paper and we don't have control over what page it gets printed on. We can't say, well, we want this on the front page in big black letters. That way, everybody gets to read it. It was never our intention to do that as far as that goes. And to heal the community between us and Pomeroy, we've started to do that. We started having, instead of having our board meetings in the central office, we've moved them now to the, to the main building in the library so anybody can come. And we've always invited, it's always the second Monday of every month is a board meeting. And if you feel like you need to come and attend it, more than welcome to come and attend it. But it's never our, it's never our intention to ever tell anybody, don't come to a board meeting. I've told people that, it's come and asked me questions before. Well, I said, come to a board meeting. I said, we always have a public, a public, they always ask, is there any communication from the public? It's always asked at every board meeting I've ever attended. And the more people that want to come, the happier I think even some of us board members would be.
Yeah, so I would like to continue on that, that with the communication with the public, we tried to include several people from each town, you know, male, female, teachers, agricultural backgrounds, just to try and get a good spread of our communities and to come through and collaborate and see what they wanted. And unfortunately, our message was not conveyed well enough. And we as a board need to go back to the public and give them some more information, I guess. And we needed a hundred and seventy-some signatures to be put on the ballot. And we had well over three fifty, I believe. So we felt that there was a good knowledge of what the referendum was. And unfortunately, it had failed. So that's something the board needs to continue to work on.
I just want to start by saying, going back to working in school. When I worked in school, I didn't have any, I didn't consider them Roff kids, Pomeroy kids, Lawrence kids or whatever. They were just students there. Everybody was treated the same. I think that somehow it's back to what everybody else said about communication. We have to break down the barriers. Everybody's supposed to be working together for the same thing. And I don't know how we convey that. Look at the crowd we have here today. You know, I would think that it'd be nice to see half an auditorium full of people since we're talking about some pretty important stuff here, guys. But how, I would like to see, I don't know why you couldn't do it during the school year and I don't know the rules of school board or anything like that, but each quarter in school, why can't we have a public meeting to fill in the community and stuff on what's actually going on? Maybe if we get them started coming to a small informal meeting and stuff, maybe that'll help us out.
And Shree, did you want to chime in at all on that question?
I just, I just want to say from the start, I did vote for the bond referendum. And I, I supported. And I would be very interested in meeting with parents to talk about any conflict they have with it. It's just, like these guys are saying, I believe we can work something out and we can come to terms that everybody can be happy with, so.
Alright, so the next question is that the school system loses a large number of employees each year. How are you going to find good quality people and retain them in the school district? And whoever wants to start, you're welcome to.
Well, I think that's an excellent question. And that kind of goes back to what we talked about at the city meeting just a little bit ago, that we just need to, we need to be able to attract amazing people into Pocahontas and amazing teachers into Pocahontas. But I think we have a lot of amazing teachers already. So I think our best, our best asset, our best way to proceed would be to figure out ways to keep them. To, and I'm not sure what all that would include, but we would need, I feel that's a very important first step, is that keep the ones we have would be great.
Yeah, I have to agree on that, that we have a very, very good staff at Pocahontas area. Last year with everything that went on and everything else, to keep the school open was a wonderful thing because I don't know how in the world they got it done. And it was a scramble on a lot of stuff. I mean, there for a while, you had to have a roadmap of who in the world, who in the world was in this chair, who was in this chair, what they was down to. I have to thank the staff for all of that and everything else too. We try to do everything we can for the staff and administration. And we need to get, it isn't a matter of trying to keep the people we got. We got very, very good people here. There's people that have just decided that they think the grass is greener on the other side. And you can't force them to stay. But it'd be nice that we could advertise more and say, would you come to a small town and see what it's like? Instead of going to like Ankeny or Des Moines area or something like that. And I mean, they have a lot more to offer as far as entertainment and, and everything else. But we still live in a community where neighbors help each other. And if they would actually see that, maybe they would actually move here and, and take a job for Pocahontas area.
Yes, I would like to basically just repeat what's kind of been said already. And basically just trying to find out why are, why are teachers turning over? And is it the social aspect of it? Is it, is it teacher pay? Or to find out why they're leaving. And just, our, our board wants to attract some young people into the teaching position and we want to have them stay here. And we just need to find out why that is.
I gotta dittle what everybody else said about the great teachers we got at Pocahontas. The question I would ask, being a great teacher is good, but are they happy? You know, if you don't have a good work environment within a school system and stuff, I was always told that there's no dumb questions. And if you cannot take as an employer, whatever, ask questions to whoever and get answers and stuff, you gotta get a little disgruntled and stuff. I just hope that we can make sure we have a happy environment. If we have happy teachers, we're gonna have happy students. That's all I have to say.
Alright, the next question we have is, what is your opinion about collaboration between the board and teachers? Should there be direct communication to understand what is happening in a classroom and to discuss the climate of the school? Whoever wants to answer that first, you are welcome to.
I'm kind of on a roll on that one, I guess. But, and I'm coming in here cold, guys. You know, I don't know the rules of a school board or whatever. So I don't know how much a board member can talk to teachers and stuff like that. But I would think that it's very important that as a school board, we know what's going on within the walls of our school. To me, it only makes sense. Unless there's state rules to that effect, I don't have any idea. But I should be able to have any teacher come up to me and say, I'm not happy with this, or I'm not happy with that. Now, if I'm totally off-base on that, then I guess I've got a lot to learn.
Well, I guess that communication is the key here. If people aren't happy, they're going to either leave or not do a quality job. And the people that are gonna suffer is gonna be the students. And so we need to make sure that, as a board, we need to make sure that everybody's happy. And we can get the staff what they want.
I have to agree with Nick on some of that. Now, if a teacher is disgruntled, I encourage him to, I know there's basically a chain of command here to a degree. Go see the administration. Administration can come to the board or you guys can come to the board direct. I don't see any problem with it. I mean, they, they can come to board meetings. We've had teachers attend board meetings before. Usually, there's always at least one teacher at a board meeting for the whole meeting, at least until we have closed session, if we have a closed session. So it's encouraged, to me, it would, I encourage any teacher to come see any board member, call. We have phone numbers, so you can call us direct. I mean, I think they're even listed in the, in the directory. So if you have any problems, call, please call.
I one-hundred percent agree. I think if we are on the school board, we are here to serve the parents. That is our goal. That is our purpose, to serve the parents. So if I were elected, I would expect the parents, I would expect the teachers both to come forward and to voice any concerns or any problems. Or maybe things that, that are going well and that we need to encourage more of that type of thing. So yes, I think it's very important that both the parents and the teachers and anybody actually in the community, because the school belongs to us. And so we just wanna, we would want to reach out and keep those lines of communication open and, and serve. That's what our purpose is, is to serve.
And Shree, this next question is for you specifically. As a person who believes in homeschooling, what is your vested interest in becoming a public school board member? And what do you hope to offer?
Okay, I was hoping that question would come up. And this is why, is because I, like I told you earlier, I had this sense, I was supposed to run for the school board. And I struggled with that. It was this spring that that first came to my mind. And I struggled with that for months. In fact, I didn't even tell my husband. And so then, at one point, I started to look at that barrier, because it was a barrier for me also. And then I flipped the coin over and I realized that my husband and I have six kids and we've been homeschooling them for twenty years. And so I've had experience from teaching them ABCs to dissecting frogs and worms. And I had somebody help me with the fetal pig. I just couldn't go through that one. But, so I've had, you know, a gamut of experience. And one of the things that I did initially was to sit down and come up with a thirteen-year plan. What do we want our kids to know before they graduate? What is a must-have and what is a, well, that would be nice to hit. And so we've sat and we've, we've thought those things through very well. And what we came down to is that our, our kids should be solid, productive, honest citizens. And that they need to have a foundation of all learning. But once they get that foundation learned, then shoot them in the direction they were designed to go. Not make sure that everybody goes through analytical geometry. I have a daughter that you shouldn't put her in that class. And so that's, I've learned that. I've learned how to choose excellent curriculum. And one of the things we had is I picked, it was a geometry curriculum. And I thought, geometry curriculum, I mean, they're all the same, right? I mean, how could it be different? And one of our daughters, I won't say which, she, I made her start it over three times. Because we would get to a certain spot and she was done. She couldn't go any further. And it didn't matter what I did, didn't matter how I bribed, it didn't matter. I yelled, nothing mattered. It was, she was stuck. And I had a mom that said to me, have you ever thought it might be the curriculum? And I thought, what? Okay, so I chose the curriculum she suggested. And that girl went right on through, no hiccups with geometry. So what I've learned is that the curriculum needs to be excellent. And that it could be that you need a little tweak for some kids. And what else? Oh, I've also learned that when we first started, that I should not teach stinging. My husband made me promise not to do that. And so, you Mrs. Christians, you have completely filled that bill for us. And all of our six kids have been dual-enrolled in Pocahontas schools. So we have a very vested interest. Plus, we also run a business. And it's important that we have very well-educated kids and the next generation is very important. So that's my answer.
The next question is, what does success look like to you? Matt, it's a pretty open one, so whoever wants to start, feel free to give your interpretation.
I'm just gonna say, probably the greatest success I've had is I, I got two sons, both going to college. I mean, I love them to death. There was times growing up that, I mean, like any parent, what do you think you were doing? But that's just the way it goes. But I hope that they continue their success. And I hope they come and ask me for advice. I mean, to them, I'm like just left of Godzilla. But I mean, that's just, that's just a normal teenage son, so. But I hope they do well in their life. And I'm proud of them.
Well, success for me would be just to make sure that all of our kids get a good education. That some are probably gonna go farther than others, but at least they're all educated and they can come back to the community. Because we don't know who's gonna be fixing a water pipe for us or, or being a doctor or a nurse. And just whatever career they choose into, that they just get a good education.
Success for me, I would say goes hand in hand with respect. You know, the older I get, I look at that word, respect. And if I can walk down the street and somebody can say, well, there's Randy Barnhart. You know, after I quit the school, I took and went back and had to visit one day and it was gonna be a quick in and out, five minutes. Well, by the time I made the path around over high school site and had students come out talking to me, and it was about forty-five minutes later that I got out of the school. When I walked out the store, or out of the school there, I'd say that was a success.
Shree, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
I think, I think we've raised successful kids, like I said, when they're honest, productive adults. In that, I had found that if you raise the bar for kids, they will scramble to get over it. They want to, they want to make you happy. They want to get your approval. And one of the things that we think is very important at our home to teach kids is self-reliance and self-government. Because we have found that if you govern yourself, no one else has to. And so that's what we believe.
Alright, the next question is, there are a lot of employees in the district who are unhappy with a lot of different aspects of the school. What will you do to address that?
Well, I just have to listen to why they are unhappy in the district. And, you know, it comes down to communication. We have to find out why they're happy or unhappy and see what we can do to change that. I don't know what else to say on that one.
Yeah, I agree with Nick on that. Communication is the key on that. Like I said, I encourage teachers, if they have a problem, even if they want to come to my house and see me and talk to me. I've been talked to at ballgames and stuff by other staff. And I know I'm probably not gonna attend as many ballgames as I used to. But my door is always open as far as if you want to talk about school or anything. I mean, or call me on the phone, talk about it. If you have an issue, call me. I'll, I'll talk to you.
I'm not sure what else you need to add to any of that. Communication, just what, you know, what is it that's not making you happy? What, what can we do to change that? Is that some, a bridge, I mean, can a bridge be developed to overcome it? Or, you know, just travel that road and have that, have those difficult discussions? And who knows, there's, I mean, there very well could be amazing ideas, things we could implement, so.
One word was said down there, bridges, a little while ago. Earlier this year that I was told that, I imagine most of you guys have heard the saying about burning bridges. Well, I'm gonna leave it at that. Well, I'm gonna leave it at that right now, but my concern is that Parker's question there was if you got a lot of disgruntled employees and stuff. What do we do as a board if these people are afraid to air their problems? I'm not saying they're, they're scared to do it, but I have the feeling that the atmosphere in the school right now is on the cold side. So we gotta warm things up to where they can open up and we can really find out what's going on.
So going off of that question, and this might be a little repetitive, so if you feel like you've covered it, you can state that. But how do you feel you can support staff? What do those steps look like? And Randy, you don't have to start if someone else is wanting to.
Well, I'm, I like to talk, but I'm stumbling around here, guys. But I, I do really like to talk. I can go to Walmart, sit at a bench and talk to anybody, but I guess the main thing is that it's all right if we can get the staff to open up and tell us their problems and stuff. We gotta be willing to listen and try to take their concerns to heart. And see if we can get, I don't know if it, if their problems be wages. I don't know, I don't have a clue in our district if our wages are up there statewide for a school our size or not. But if it's other, other problems in the school, we sure have to listen to them.
I guess, I guess this is kind of a dangerous question to answer, but the truth is, is, you know, we just need to open those doorways. And maybe, Randy, you mentioned the word scared or afraid or something like that. If that's the case, then let's just put an anonymous survey together and people could answer the questions. Put out a variety of questions and then leave blank space. Maybe you could write in a concern you have or something like that. Maybe it needs to be done anonymously so there's no reason to be afraid. I don't know.
I guess I don't know what steps that we could necessarily do to fix the problem, but I think the main problem would be the communication. If, if we don't know that something's wrong, we can't take any steps to correct it. I know I've kinda hit on that multiple times before, but I, I think a lot of problems can be fixed by just simply communicating the two sides and kind of coming together on, to find a solution.
I have to agree with the young lady beside me that I never ever thought about if they wanted to have a sheet of paper put in front of all the teachers or whatever, their disgruntled employees and say, you don't have to sign this. Just write it down and we'll see what we can do about it. I've never, but that's a very good idea. As far as anything, like I said, the communication's the key. Be, don't be afraid to go to a school board meeting and talk to the board. I mean, we're just people, just like you, just like you people out there, we're the same thing. We have, we have issues and everything else, just like anybody else, but if you got a problem, come to school board meeting, let it known.
All right. The next question we have is, will you support LGBT students and parents? Whoever wants to start, you can.
Well, I believe at PAC that we should not be discriminatory against anybody. It is a public school, so everyone should be welcomed and everybody should be made to feel welcome.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. That's their choice. If they wanna, I'm not gonna condone what they do. I'm not gonna say that I don't like them. That's their choice. If they wanna come to PAC. And I don't think they should be discriminated against whatsoever for whatever their either religious belief is or how they feel if they're a man or a woman or something in between. That's their, that is their choice. I don't have any disagreements with that.
That is a loaded question, very loaded question. I'm not exactly sure what nuances are in that question. And so since it was broadly asked, I would answer it broadly. And one of the things when preparing for this forum, my husband came across this quote. And it's from the Family Research Council and it says, "Our nation's school system should be welcoming to all children of all social and religious backgrounds. This means that school curriculums must be free of political and social agendas and remain focused on the primary goal of education. To prepare the next generation for success through dissemination of basic knowledge and skills, free of social and political agenda." So that pretty much sums up what I believe. I believe our safe should, I'm sorry, our school should be very safe. It should be safe for all kids. And I believe that all kids should feel welcome. And as I said, that's, that's somewhat of a loaded question, but it was broad and so I answered broadly. But I would be happy to talk to anybody about specifics.
Yeah, I don't see any problem with it either. You know, if I'm sitting in the lunchroom in the morning talking to kids, you know, kids are kids, so that's all I have to say.
All right. Next question is, what does learning look like to you?
Well, for one thing, I can tell you it's not algebra. Because when I was working in school and stuff, I wasn't the math guy. You know, X's and O's and Y's and all that stuff, that's not mine. But I guess learning to me is having the kids, having good staff, having students that are happy. Learning in the classroom and stuff. And I don't know, Parker, graduate from Pocahontas High, look at that, see? So proud of you, bud. But I think just our graduation rates and stuff, I think should be up there and stuff, so that's all I have to say.
Well, learning to me doesn't just stop at the school. It's something you do every day. There's something, something you learn every day, just whether it be with your work or, or just socially. You're always learning your whole life. It shouldn't be just early on in your life. It should be a whole lifelong process.
Yeah, I agree with most of that. And I'm not disagreeing with all of it. But the biggest thing here at Pocahontas area is kids should get an education first. It's not about extracurricular. I'm not saying that extracurricular activities are bad. But I'm also saying that they should get their education first. And that's the way it should be. And that's what I hope they get, is an education first.
Okay, so I think learning is that moment when the child's eyes light up and you can just see it go across the face. They just understood what you've been trying to teach them. And it can be little things or big, important things. It can just, you know, it can be algebra. I mean, we don't all have to like it, that's for sure, Randy, but it can be algebra, but it can also just be finally figuring out that G H E says theh and not t h. So I just think it's exciting. It is exciting. It is something that, like Nick said, it is something we're supposed to do our whole lives. And once they learn how to add and subtract and, and read and all of those things, I mean, they can learn anything they want. And, you know, I had my oldest, who's twenty-four right now and works in DC, she called me and she said, you never taught me this. And I said, so learn it yourself. I mean, I taught you how to learn, so learn. And so we, we can't teach these kids everything, but we can teach them how to learn and we can teach them to love to learn. And then they can take off and fly on their own.
All righty. So we have two questions and then I'll give you all a chance to do last comments if you have any. This question is, what goals will you set for the administration and how will you ensure those goals are met and sustained? Whoever wants to start, feel free to pass the mic.
I'd like to see the administration get along with faculty a little better than they have. I know a lot of times that faculty seems like they have a hard time going to administration and saying this, that I have a problem or whatever. Go, that's what their job is too. They're just not there to just draw a paycheck or anything. They're there to try to make your guys' lives a little better too, to a degree. If you have any questions, go see Mr. Kramer or go see the principals and stuff like that. As far as if you have a problem or an issue or something like that, and they'll, if they have, if it's big enough, they'll come see us. It's been done before. So I encourage that. That if you have a problem, go see administration or come to the board. It's, like I said, it's been done before. We're not, the worst we're gonna do is say, no, that isn't gonna work that way, but that's the worst we'd say to you.
Could you repeat the question?
Yes. What goals will you set for the administration and how will you ensure those goals are met and sustained?
I think the main thing was, is gonna be that administration just has to listen to, to our staff. And we need to, I, I guess I just have the same thing. It's just our communication. We need to ha, be able to listen to our staffing and our administration. And if, if our staff is not happy, that, you know, the board is above the administration. So I guess if you're not getting what you want, maybe you need to come to us and, and just communicate your problems and, and tell us the steps you have taken so that maybe we could do something.
Yeah, I think I'll agree with the communication part too. You know, it can go back to that bond issue and stuff. I think we have to communicate a lot better with every community within the district, for sure. And how we do that, I don't know. I still think it'd work to have more public meetings or forums, just informational meetings and stuff. And definitely communication with staff and stuff. You know, like these guys were saying, that the board is there, should be a sounding board for anybody that's working within the school system. You guys should be able to come to us and ask questions and get them answered, I guess.
Shereen, did you want, have anything you want to add?
I might have you repeat the questions.
Yes, happy to. What goals will you set for the administration and how will you ensure those goals are met and sustained?
Okay, so I'm somewhat gonna take a pass on that question because I would be brand new to the school board. And I, I would need to get a firm foundation and to get up and running before I would be setting goals. The, other than what I've already mentioned, I think it's important that we listen to the parents. And I think there's, there's a lot going on in the United States right now and school boards are top in the news. And, and parents being disgruntled with school boards, that should be top, that is top in the news. And I don't think that should ever happen here. I don't think it ever has. But I think that we should be prepared for whatever may be coming. And that it's important that we listen to the parents and we actually work for the parents. And it's important that our administration and our teachers listen to the parents. And so that's what I would say. But being brand new, I would have to learn quickly and get up and running, but that's where I would stand.
All right. And then the last question before we go into a chance for final comments is, what is your vision for our district five years from now?
So like all of us believe, excellence, not perfection, because we can't attain perfection, but excellence is attainable. One of my friend's son just graduated from welding school at Iowa, at Iowa Central. And the college professor said to them, when he was teaching them, he said, you live in the United States. You need to weld with excellence, because when you go over a bridge, you don't wanna know, you don't wanna wonder, did an A student weld this bridge? Or did a C student weld this bridge? So that's what I, I think is important, is that we expect excellence of our kids. They should do their best. And that's what I think.
Agreed that the excellence in kids is a good thing, everything else as far as that goes. I hope that we can get a bond issue passed in the next five years. I mean, it's been shot down once and we may have to change things around it. Make it so it's a little more progressive than just one big lump sum. But that's, I mean, we're trying to, trying to do a lot of stuff in a short amount of time. And we're just hoping that the community will support that.
Well, in five years, I would hope that possibly our enrollment has grown somewhat. That would be a good sign for our district. And that we can continue to improve on our facilities. Because I, I believe that with good facilities, you'll be willing to attract new people, staff and students into the school. And that we can continue to move forward.
Yeah, I agree also that I'm hoping in five years that we see some new facilities and stuff. But my feelings are that you can have the fanciest buildings and all that. But if you don't have a safe and friendly environment within the school system, that it's just a hollow place. So I'm just hoping that, I'm not saying everybody within the school system has to be like family, because we have fights in our families. But I just hope that we see the school system grow and to a safe place for the kids.
All right. And then are there any final comments any of you would like to make? Feel free to do so now. If you feel like there's anything you need to get a chance to say, just a parting comment to the audience.
I would just like to say that I would like to encourage everybody to go out and vote on November second for your favorite candidate, whoever that may be. And that may help the community get what they want.
I would agree with Nick on that too. I don't care who you vote for, but please vote. That is my biggest, my biggest thing.
So thank you guys for coming out today. We appreciate that and I was online. And yep, I agree with you guys. We should vote. One of the things that I'm kind of excited about is when we talked about teachers, recruiting new teachers. One, I don't know if I should say his name, but anyway, his name is Jake Samuelson. I tried really hard to get him to come back to Pocahontas. And so we're gonna keep trying. And we need to look at who's graduating from college and teaching or something related to teaching from our town. And we should try to recruit them back here. And so that's, that would be wonderful.
I'd just like to thank Parker for inviting us up here. Also, I'd like to invite you guys to go out and vote. I'm coming here, like I say, this is the first time I've been out running for anything for a long time. And I'm coming in as a sincere guy and I, anybody has any questions and stuff, if I don't know the answers, you know. if I don't know the answers, you know, maybe I can find out for you. Thank you.
All righty, so we have about 10 minutes left. And you can have a chance to come visit with whichever candidate you would like to or all of them or all that good stuff, just talk with them on one before the noon hour. Thank you to the Real Theater very much for letting us use your space. Greg, I don't know if you can hear my voice, but I appreciate you being the tech person. And thank you all for coming, all the candidates. And thank you everyone who participated in person and virtually. And that will conclude our 2021 School Board Candidate Forum. Thank you all.